All right, we're going to call the meeting to order today. And our first item on the agenda, call to order, next item, public comment. Anyone from the public would like to comment? We got DeAndre here, thanks for joining us. This is our budget boot camp.
How you doing, everybody? My name is DeAndre Jones. I just wanted to comment on, I actually am going to a boot camp for business, so it's kind of funny to be here for a budget boot camp. But I just wanted to speak on the things that I'm doing and hopefully you guys consider some of my ideas. As I've said earlier in the earlier meeting before, that I look into 3D print homes here in Kent County. So as I heard about the funding that is available to our city and county, I hope that you guys look at 3D printing homes as a way to attack the housing crisis. It's a creative, innovative way. The material that they use to 3D print houses is 33% stronger than concrete, it gets better, sustainable, eco-friendly, it's better for the planet to print homes, reducing the construction time for at least three months. So 90 days, you can chip off to 3D print homes, 3D print 70 homes, two-story homes. These are very, very nice, you can make them cheap, you can make them affordable, you can make them sustainable, you can add a...
So we'll possibly have some kids that are gamers that want to get into government, that would love to be part of the IT team here. So as I said, I went to Grand Valley State Universities. Thank you for turning up my volume, I love hearing myself. But I, as I went to this job fair for Grand Valley State and connected with almost 100 organizations, and some of the best organizations, to had it with them about getting those job internships, getting kids from Kent County, African-American people of color, white people, all people, getting our community to be able to engage in the gaming community, get interns and internships and job opportunities that are above the poverty line. I really care about our community, I really care about creating a pipeline to get our, the best talent, the best educational opportunities, the best internships, the best wages, the best of the best everything that I can for my community. I work at this every day, I show up every time, and I'm very consistent and I'm very dedicated to creating the best opportunities, keeping our kids off the streets, creating a better policing community relations, making sure that our kids in the juvenile detentions stay out of the juvenile detention and become productive citizens of society. I'm a perfect example of a kid who's in a juvenile detention who became a productive citizen in this society. And if I get the support from my Kent County Commissioners and Kent County as a whole, I can do an amazing things and I can really transform our community. As you guys have seen, I've been able to do transformative things and I would really love you guys' support in the future as I'm working hard and as I show up. I don't just show up when I don't get ARPA funding, I show up regardless if I get ARPA funding or not. Shout out to those people that do, but I really truly care about our community and I'm not a one for the money, I didn't grow up having a lot. I've learned to appreciate a lot and that's a little, and that's why I believe I will have a lot and I will appreciate a lot, but do a lot with a little. And so I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, DeAndre. Anyone else from the public who'd like to comment? All right, seeing none. Our next item is the board's role in the budget process. And we have Al here to explain that.
Good morning once again and welcome to Budget Boot Camp, which will be, I'm sure, the most exciting part of your day. So today, we're going to cover the Board of Commissioner role in the budget, the County Administrator Controller's role in the budget, budget timeline, the CIP budget process, operating budget process, reporting, and also fund balance and cash flow. So first, the board, the budget. The board's role in the budget is one of your major statutory duties as Commissioners under Michigan state law. And the board's role in this area, the county board is a policy board. You as Commissioners make high-level policy decisions, you develop a strategic plan, then appoint the County Administrator Controller to manage those policy decisions, and the implementation of the board's strategic plan. The Administrator Controller's Office brings all relevant information to the board so they can make informed decisions about major issues, including the budget. As it relates to the budget process specifically, the board sets policy and develops a strategic plan, as mentioned. The board sets budget parameters, the board holds a public hearing, the board adopts the General Appropriation Act, and also sets the millage rate to be levied each year for our general operations and then also for all the special millages that our residents have adopted. The Administrator's role. So the County Administrator Controller develops the recommended budget parameters for board approval. My office also develops the operating and capital budgets, I should say my office with fiscal, fiscal does a lion's share of that, of that work. But the Administrator Controller is responsible for developing the operating and capital budgets and presenting them to the board. And the Administrator Controller also is responsible to transmit the General Appropriation Act to the board and controls expenditures appropriated under the act, once that has been approved. And so at this point, I'll turn it over to our Deputy Fiscal Services Director, who also is our Budget Director, and that is Marvin Van Nordwick, and he'll take over at this time.
All right, thanks for joining us this morning, Marvin.
Morning. Unfortunately, I only get paid for one of those titles. I'm going to summarize. I'm going to summarize the budget timeline and the processes for the CIP and the operating budgets at a high level, just to give you an idea of how those processes work and hopefully show you how to locate financial reports on Access Camp. This is a graphical version of the timeline you've been provided. There are three phases to the budget process. In blue, you have the planning phase, the CIP phase is in orange, and the operating budget phase in red. The planning phase takes place between October and February. Between October and January, the strategic plan is updated, budget planning meetings take place, and Administrator and Board Chair set their initiatives. February, the Finance Committee sets the budget guidelines. The CIP process takes place in March, between March and April, excuse me. In March, the administrative recommendation is reviewed by the Finance Committee and the full board. In April, the Finance Committee acts on the administrative recommendation and its recommendation is included in the operating budget. Operating budget process takes place between June and August. In June, the administrative recommendation is reviewed by the Finance Committee and the full board. In July, the administrative recommendation review continues, and the public hearing date is established by the board. In August, the Finance Committee acts on the administrative recommendation, the board holds a public hearing, and the board acts on the Finance Committee's budget recommendation, also known as the General Appropriation Act. Are there any questions on the budget timeline?
Thank you, Marvin. So I know that in the past, we've talked about, you know, the board retreat and how the board retreat should help set policy goals for the year. Given that we have the budget guidelines established in February, is there a hope that our board retreat can help shape the next year's fiscal budget, or are we going to have to kind of wait for the timelines to start to line up more?
My hope is that we can do it sooner. Whoops. My hope is that we can do it sooner than where we currently have it scheduled. I think part of it is the transition and getting those timelines set, but I would prefer to have the strategic, annual strategic planning session happen prior to the development of the CIP and operating budgets. And so I think we're still feeling our way through that. The other unique thing about 2023 is that the end of 2023 marks the end of the five-year strategic plan the board had adopted. We've been meeting with community partners to look at perhaps a futuring process, like Kent County 2050, where we could look at where are, where would we like to get to in 2050? And then each of the organizations would still do their own strategic planning, but we would also have a piece of that shared vision for the future. So that's another factor that is weighing in on some of this. But we will find some way to get input prior to developing the budgets, absolutely.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, any other questions at this time? Seeing none? Keep moving forward, Marvin.
Okay, now we're going to look at the CIP budget process in a little more detail. The CIP budgets, budgets for projects costing $25,000 or more and having an expected useful life of three years or more. For board policy, the county sets aside a minimum of the equivalent of .2 mils annually for the CIP budget. The CIP budget is utilized mostly by facilities, IT, parks, and the Sheriff Department. February, departments submit a CIP request form for each project being requested, and they submit that to Fiscal Services. Fiscal Services compiles and objectively scores each project based on the contents of the submitted request form. Scoring is based on evaluation criteria, health and safety, legal liability, prior binding commitments and mandates, operational impact, percent county-funded, alignment with the board's strategic plan, and annual operating and maintenance costs. Once project requests are compiled, fiscal turns them over to the CIP review team in March, who reviews the projects in detail. The CIP review team is made up of Fiscal, Facilities Management Director, IT Director, Park Superintendent, Sheriff Admin Officer, Purchasing Manager, Fiscal Services Director, and myself. By completion of this review, the CIP review team submits its CIP budget recommendation to the Administrator Controller. Administrator reviews the submitted budget. If it's not approved, it goes back to the CIP review team for modification. Once approved, the Administrator's CIP budget recommendation is submitted to the Finance Committee and the full board. Finance Committee and full board review the administrative recommendation. April, the Finance Committee deliberates. If the CIP recommendation is not approved, it goes back to the Administrator for modification. Once approved, it is included in the General Appropriation Act, which is acted on by the full board in August.
Any questions? Yes, Commissioner DeBoer.
Madam Chair, I'm curious, why don't, for the CIP review team, why don't we have any from the Commission or the Administrative Office on there? Is that intentional, or?
The board, as Al mentioned, is a policy board, and this is an administrative function. And you get the opportunity to review the Administrator's recommendation.
Can you adjust the mic so we're speaking right?
So at those budget review sessions, you get the opportunity to review the budget in detail and ask questions of requesting departments as well.
Okay.
I think part of the reason for that is the board, as a group of 21, speaks as a voice, and when we get input, the staff puts it together. If we had one or two Commissioners on a staff committee, we would be getting the voice of a piece of the county, but not a voice of the entire county. So I think that's one reason why this is typically structured this way.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Hennessy.
Brush my memory, .2 mils in the last cycle meant how many, how many dollars?
.2 mils equates to approximately $6 million.
$6 million. And that's helpful, so we understand the parameters there. Binding prior commitments, when we, you know, with the CIP too, we do have some binding prior commitments, such as for the Health Department bond. Can you explain that a little bit more?
I'm not sure what you're referring to, but there are prior binding commitments. If you want, if you wanted to talk about one specifically, I'm not sure which one that is.
Well, we always have a Health Department paying off that facilities that comes right off the top of, you know, the annual payment that comes right off the top of CIP.
Got it. That's a good example of a prior binding commitment. We have a bond, one of the bonds for the fuller complex improvements that shows up in the CIP budget each year. When that project was approved, it was approved as part of the CIP budget. It doesn't necessarily have to be in the CIP fund, but that's where it's been since the start of time, and it's all general fund dollars into the day, it's just that was where it was agreed to go by the board when it was initiated. So fuller complex improvements includes animal shelter, the roadway, a few other projects within there, district courts also, including that bond issue.
So it's really anything that we've committed to that we have to live up to. Could be a labor agreement, could be debt service, it could be a contract that is still mid-contract. Not in the CIP, but as far as the county, binding commitments could mean all those things.
Correct, and it could be a previous CIP project that maybe ran out of funding for, because of supply chain or something like that, for example, so.
Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Chair. I would, given the discussion about the composition of the CRPT, or CIPRT, you know, we have talked about having a Commissioner on there, and I do think, while I can understand not wanting to rely on one Commissioner to represent 21, we have board officers, we have a Finance Chair who is appointed by the Chair. And if any of those individuals, any of those board officers cannot adequately represent the voices of 21, we would see that reflected in the CIP review. And I do think, given some of the hurdles we've had, one, draft CIPs have been reviewed at the board level, having that representative would help avoid that. And just given the fact that we've got, well, at least 10 days before the first meeting, I do wonder if it makes sense to see if it is worth considering the appointment of a board officer, whether that be the Finance Chair or otherwise, to represent the board at least at that level, simply because, you know, that has always been a process that's been more opaque and has confused Commissioners, especially our newer Commissioners, and having a member there may help, you know, avoid some of the pitfalls we've had as CIPs in the past have been reviewed.
We can certainly discuss that more, I think. I think that the important thing to us certainly is to get that input upfront, because some of the difficulties you referred to involved when the board didn't give input upfront. I'm thinking of the heated restrooms for the winter in the Tarks and how that blew up the year before I came here, came back here. And so I think we can avoid a lot of those pitfalls if we have a good chance for the board to give input. And then maybe there's a step to add with Executive Committee before it gets presented or something that, there's some alternatives we can talk about with the board chair, I think.
Yeah, let's continue on with the explanation of the budget process.
Yeah. Any other questions on the CIP process? On to the operating budget process. Department sent operating budget requests to Fiscal Services in April. Fiscal Services audits and compiles the budget requests and forwards them to the operating budget review team. The operating budget review team is made up of the County Administrator, Deputy Administrators, Human Resources Director, Fiscal Services Director, and myself. May, the Administrator and the operating budget review team meet with departments to review their budgets. The Administrator makes budget decisions and submits his budget to the Finance Committee and the full board. July, the full board and the Finance Committee reviews the administrative budget recommendation. August, the Finance Committee deliberates on the budget. If it's not approved, it goes back to the Administrator Controller for modification. Once approved, the Finance Committee recommendation, recommended budget is submitted to the full Board reviews the budget and deliberates. If it's not approved, it goes back to the Finance Committee for modification. The board approves the budget via the General Appropriation Act, the budget is adopted for the budget year starting October 1.
All right, any questions on this section here? Commissioner Woodin.
Sorry. I did at least, given some of the newer members we had, and that I didn't necessarily learn this in my first term, it might be helpful for staff to, at a high level, explain the legal restrictions of what we can and can't use general fund dollars for.
I'll start. So basically, the general fund dollars cannot be used to confer an individual benefit. For example, I remember 20 years ago, we had a Commissioner who ran Genesis, the housing agency, and was interested in having the board support that agency. And if we support housing through the general fund, we're actually conferring an individual benefit on someone. And so it's things like that that we can't use general fund money for. Marvin, would you like to add to that, or?
General fund is supported by general operating taxes, okay? So anything that has its own special revenue shows up in a special revenue fund, another fund besides the general fund. And there's also things that may not meet the public spending requirements. Anything like that has to have its own funding source, it can't be funded by, that's kind of what Al was alluding to, it can't be funded by the general operating tax levy.
Another clarif, so we have the sheriff here. So it'd be hard to argue that any of the citizens of Kent County benefit more or less from the sheriff if they pick up the phone and call for service, then the sheriff responds. And so, you know, in cities, it's a fire department, same thing. There are no city residents that have an individual, specific benefit by having a fire department. It exists to serve everyone. And so those services that benefit everyone like that are considered general fund and where you can't confer the individual benefit. Then, of course, we have all the special millages, and they have their own restrictions in that they can only be spent for things that were identified in the ballot language for which the voters approved that special millage.
Thanks for the clarification.
Okay, so reporting, I'm going to attempt to show you how to access reports online.
Do you, are you trying to share?
Well, I was going to share the website, but that's fine. When you go to Access Camp, at the homepage, you scroll down to the bottom of the page to quick links, and you'll see the Financial Transparency tab. In that tab, you'll see many of the county's financial, primary financial reports. There's three images on the screen here, one for the financial overview, that's a document presented to the bond rating agencies each year. It includes financials for key funds, an economic profile for the county, cash summary, investment summary, and a debt summary. And again, this document is presented annually to the county bond rating agencies. Document in the middle is the annual comprehensive financial report. That's the audit report that's presented to the board upon completion of the audit each year. And then to the right, you have the annual budget summary, which contains the recommended budget, and is later, and later updated once it's adopted, for the adopted budget. I just encourage you to get online and take a look at that document ahead of our budget review, so you can be familiar with it, because when we present the budget information to you, it'll be in that, in that document.
Yes, Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just wanted to comment that in this adopted budget, there's a comprehensive preamble, I believe, like the first 23 pages, that explains exactly what the county does. People come to me all the time and ask, well, so what does the county do? What do Commissioners do? I send them to this document and tell them to read that preamble, and it's very, very concise. So thank you very much for, you know, putting that in there.
Commissioner Hennessy.
The department also issues reports to us, Finance Committee, but comes to all of us, on updates in terms of how our spending is versus the budget. Can you better describe to us, you know, what kind of a timeframe that that will be? Is that changed at all as we change our fiscal year?
No, that shouldn't change, there'll be quarterly reports still. We do present, Jeff presents quarterly reports for the first, second, third quarter. The fourth quarter is presented with the audit document, the annual comprehensive financial report. So those will be presented at the end of the first quarter, we'll see one coming up here, and the first quarter's ending in March, probably end of May, first of, end of April, first of May will be the first one you'll see for this calendar year.
Will that include, then, the report, the final report on what happened for 2022?
I have a preliminary number in it, yes.
Before May or in May?
That'll be with the first quarter report, which will likely happen end of April, first of May. It's not on the calendar yet, but that's the general timeframe.
So we don't close out 2022?
It's still, it'll still be a work in progress at that point, so it'll be a preliminary number for '22.
Thank you.
Yeah, when government accruals sometimes take, you know, up to 90 days to get through that process, and so we're just there at March 31st where we're finally getting the books ready to present to the auditors. So it just, it's a lengthy process to close out the year end.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff to talk about fund balance and cash flow.
So real quickly, so we go through an extensive capital and operating budget to make sure we're maintaining our fund balance and cash flow, which is the ultimate goal of all of this. So on this slide, you'll see the 2010 to 21 general fund balance. The black line is our 40% per policy, what we need to maintain, and you can see the various makeups of the fund balance. Some of it's assigned, some of it's committed. There's a little bit of non-spendable and some of it's unassigned, as you can see there. So we're a little bit above our 40% goal at this point, so that's something we track very closely. And then our cash flow, and we talked about this when we talked about changing the fiscal year, you can see our peak in cash is September, that's when all of our taxes come in, they're all due in September 14th, some of them are due in July, depending on the unit, but, and we'll accrue most of those taxes back this year. So when we report at year end, our 930 amount is going to be a lot higher than we're used to seeing, but that's because we need that cash flow for the entire year to fund operations. So you can see the low points typically May, June-ish. We build up cash with taxes and then spend it down throughout the year, so. I believe that is the end of our presentation.
All right, thank you. So it looks like we might have a couple of questions, so Commissioner Woodin, go ahead, lead us off.
Thank you. A few more questions, just kind of broadly. If you can go back to the first fund balance slide, could you describe the difference between unassigned, assigned, committed, and non-spendable?
An accounting test today here, Commissioner Woodin, yes, I like it. So unassigned is fund balance, which is basically, just like the word says, is unassigned to any particular use, it's just available for whatever needs we have. So the yellow bar is assigned, and that's assigned under our terms to budget stabilization, and we report that out each and every year, and on the quarterly report, as Commissioner Hennessy said. And then the blue is committed to, that's to the 40% range, so that's committed, so that, basically, those three categories make up our 40%. And then the red is unspendable, that's like inventories and small amount there, so that's kind of the broad definitions of those.
Wonderful. And going to the next slide over, so I'm seeing here, like, assigned, as you've mentioned, that's more to satisfy our cash flow requirements. Committed to economic stabilization, that's more ensuring that we maintain our fund balance policy regardless of revenue, or how local, or how our economic health impacts our revenue. If anything, could you talk a little bit more about how our fund balance policy is dictated by a point in time? Not necessarily that we maintain a fund balance at that level throughout the year... Not necessarily that we maintain a fund balance at that level throughout the year. It's not, so to speak, the, the ongoing amount that's in our savings account, but it is the point-in-time balance of our checking account at the end of the fiscal year.
I think I understand your question. So, before, we always had a 1231 year end, and you can see the line starts to decline near the end of the year. And that's because, again, the high point in the year is typically right around the end of September. That's when all the taxes are in, and with the change in fiscal year, we'll accrue most of those back. So, we're gonna have the peak accrual, the peak fund balance at the end of September now. So, you'll see that cash flow right now is 40% of the previous year's spending of expenditures and transfers out. So, we're anticipating that number will actually have to be changed in the future, the fund balance policy. It's probably gonna be somewhere between 45 to 50%, we're thinking right now. Where'd it go? Oh. Well, we're gonna wait a couple of years and see where this all kind of hashes out before we actually recommend a change to that fund balance policy. So, but you can see there, if you started way in December, you can see the line descending all the way through June, July. And that's when we're using up all of our cash, because we've collected it all early in the year, and now we gotta spend it down. So, we maintain all those hefty reserves to pay our bills, basically, throughout the year.
And, you know, I just think that's helpful. I think, especially when I was in my first term and, and when I was running, the impression I got was that fund balance was the savings account. And it's not the case. It's, it's, it is a moving number. And, you know, in the end, it's, it's so we can, again, pay our bills. So, just wanted to make sure that that was discussed, given the newer, the, the number of new commissioners we've got.
All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Boojak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The state is experiencing a fund balance, like, lots of extra tax money that's been collected, and so, that's a good situation. Does the county, is the county having a similar experience? Are we somehow collecting more taxes than we need?
Well, that's an interesting question. So, this is general fund only, right? So, the state's surplus, I think they had around $9 billion at one point. A lot of that is the federal funding, money they receive, so in a separate fund, not in the general fund. Our general, and they're, the state's primarily funded by income taxes mostly, and we're, we're primarily property tax focused. So, it's, it's a little bit of an apple and oranges comparison between the two. I mean, we're collecting taxes right now. We had large taxable increases this year. I think we're actually gonna see over a 9% increase this year, which is probably the biggest one I've ever seen in my career. So, are we collecting too much? You know, it depends. How many, how many services do you wanna, wanna pay for? So, we, we try to balance that each and every year between, you know, do we add new payroll? Do we add new positions? And do we have enough funding, of course, to support that? Not only this year, but long-term. So, we're always monitoring that, that healthy balance.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah. Commissioner DeBoer.
I just have a quick comment, and it's just my two cents, but one of my kind of pet peeves, I guess, in government is we have an initiative and we have a great idea, and it's gonna save the taxpayers money. And I use the insurance authority as an example, and I'm very supportive of it, but we sometimes think, oh, it's gonna save the taxpayers money because it's going to, you know, decrease our expenses. But really, I, that messaging sometimes isn't helpful, because most of the time, it just gets appropriated to other areas, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but I just wanted to express my caution in saying some of those ideas of, let's just be frank and say, oh, it's probably gonna fund other services, rather than maybe really decrease the millage rate. So, that was just my, oh, thought I had.
That is a great comment, and if anything, I think maybe sometimes we need to sharpen up our communication. Where it can save taxpayer money, we have a whole number of capital needs, and if we can bond less for those and we're not paying debt with interest, then that would actually be a tangible savings, I think. But, yeah.
Any other, any other questions or comments? All right. Well, sometimes you might think of something afterwards, so please direct any questions to either Al or, you know, Jeff or Marvin, and I'm sure that we could get the correct answers that you need. So, thanks for your time today. Well, one last thing. Is there any commissioner miscellaneous? All right. Seeing none, we are adjourned.